As I've moved from town to town, um, and yeah, I just find it fascinating, um, using land well.
That's pretty interesting. So I still intrigued by, especially with the latest movement in, you know, sustainable buildings and.
Yes. So when I did my architecture thesis, I actually, um, used an architect over in Australia for my inspiration. And he was doing a lot of green architecture. Um, and he worked with Aboriginal tribes over there. Um, so it was, it was pretty neat. And this was back in the nineties when, you know, green architecture was just budding. So it's always been a passion of mine.
Are there any favorite buildings of yours that you might want to mention or?
Oh, my goodness. Yeah. The Fish and Wildlife Building had, if you've ever been in there, it's gorgeous. How they incorporate the outside and bring it in. There's just so many unique ways to do things. Well, there's, um, my, one of my favorite things that people are incorporating nowadays is, um, solar panels and water retention on roofs. It just seems like such a win-win, especially in bus depots and parking lots. Um, it's, I think it's amazing that you can, like REI out in Natick, they, um, all their parking spots are covered. So you don't have to deal with snow and they use, um, the, the coverings are solar panels. So they're generating electricity, um, or converting electricity. And then they're also doing water retention off of those solar panels and they're using them for all their toilets. It's just so cool. They're using everything. I would love to see like every school bus depot doing this. Never have to clear another school bus.
Wow.
That's so neat, right? So.
Yeah, that is very neat.
Yeah.
I'm not going to monopolize the conversation here. Mike, do you have? Any questions or comments or?
Um, yeah.
Favorite buildings?
My laptop just acting up a little bit. I think I forgot to turn the, uh, screen timer off. But, uh, yeah, no Kelly, you know, thank you for, um, you know, for coming back to the Conservation Committee, uh, you know, here in Northborough. Uh, I mean, just your, you know, your, your resume and, and your, uh, and, uh, you know, all your, your accomplishments and, and things that you've done. Um, on top of having a, an awesome ice cream place, you know, is, is very, uh, is, is very impressive. Uh, obviously you speak with it, uh, with, with passion, um, you know, which is, which is great. Um, you know, sounds like, uh, you know, you, you really have a, you know, a, a real, real drive and passion towards, uh, towards this. So, you know, I don't, I don't have any additional, you know, questions about, you know, picking apart your resume or, or anything like that. Um, but you know, thank you for, for coming back and, and I would just say, you know, if you know other, um, you know, great qualified people, you know, like yourself, you know, we always have openings on different, different committees and things in Northborough. So we're always looking to fill those seats. So, but, uh, but yeah, no, thank you. And, uh, you know, and, uh, and thanks for coming back.
Thank you. Do you, um, would you like to say something?
What, what could I possibly say? I mean, this is a lame dog, right? So. No, Kelly, I mean, the commission is, um, Kelly's got experience. She's been in the commission before. I think it's pretty well balanced with, with the, the people that have, that are sitting there. They all bring something special to the commission. Um, and Kelly certainly brings her passion, which you heard, which you feel right here. So, but she doesn't mind getting on their boots and mucking around down in the swamp. See, that's very important. So, yes, no, it's, uh, we'd be thrilled to have her, have her back.
Great. So can, can one of you, um, by, by any slight chance, do you know what percent of Northborough is covered by wetlands?
Off the top of my head, who me or Greg, either one of you, do you happen to know? So I have no idea. My, my habit when I am asked questions is to just go to the data. Um, so I would pull up a map and just, and look it up. Cause every time I try to make a guess, it's, it's not good.
I, I, I was just wondering, um, it's off the top of your head, you knew because clearly wetlands are very important and, um, should be appreciated more, right?
Well, the challenge Northborough has too, Juliana, is that, is that from a building perspective, all the easy building lots have been dealt with. So everything, everything that comes now has some sort of issue for the most part. So.
Interesting. So it makes your job more difficult.
Yeah. When we, I guess, and the commission, I think tries to strike a balance between protecting the wetland resources and personal property rights. You know, so we try and balance between the two of those. So.
Wow. It's an opportunity to get creative and to look for the solutions because there's always solutions there. We just have to scratch our head and figure out what the solution is.
Well, that's a, that's a good attitude. Um, so I just have one, one thing that I was kind of curious about in your fieldwork, Kelly. You did a tree inventory in the town of Framingham?
Oh yeah. Straight out of college. Um, yeah. So I have actually walked every single street in the now city of Framingham. And I measured, so when I was in school for wildlife biology, part of the, um, wetland delineation vascular plants, invasive plants that I was studying, um, I just fell in love with plants. And I, after college, that's when everything crashed back in, let's see, 2006, 2007. I just bought my first house, um, and the town of Framingham was hiring. So I went and became their tree inventory specialist and then was bumped up to recycling coordinator and eventually supervisor and heavy equipment operator. Yeah. But it was fun. It was great. They have some amazing trees there. It's, it was my first experience with tulip trees, which if you've never seen a tulip tree, it's a gorgeous tree. Um, so it was, it was interesting. They have some great trees.
Wow. That's fantastic. So, um, I, I guess you know, the schedule, usually we review that, but you know, you know, all of that. And I think unless Mike, you have any more questions?
No, I think I'm all set.
Well, we started late, but will end sort of on time. If that's okay with you. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't really, I think being on the commission fairly recently, I, I feel like I know what's going on. I have been spying the meetings online. So I stayed in the loop because I was always curious as to what was still going on, but.
Great. So ju- so if you recall, um, Mike and I will, you know, undoubtedly move you forward. And it, the, the, your position will not become official until the whole board votes, which our next meeting is July 15.
Okay.
When is your next meeting? Do you know, Greg?
Uh, the eighth.
The eighth. We, we, we can't do it any sooner.
Yeah.
But.
That's okay. I'll just, I'll spy from the web.
Okay. Well, thank you both for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you too. Thank you. Kelly, we'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
Bye.
Okay. Next up we have, um, Erica Ziger. I don't see her in the waiting room yet. I, um, Liz Nolan will be joining if we have any questions. Oh, there's Erica. All right. I will let them both in. Hold on one moment.
Hello, Erica and Liz.
Hi, how are you?
Erica's enjoying the beautiful day.
I am. I'm sitting outside.
I'm, I envy you. So, um, Erica, have you met Mike?
No.
And Liz, have you?
I have not.
So Mike is our, our new member on the select board. So he's a little bit new to this whole process and I must admit that I'm, I'm not that accomplished, but we'll, um, we'll have a nice conversation about your application, Erica.
Sure.
And Angie will be helping us, um, with the technology.
Perfect.
So Erica, not everyone gets the application. And, um, usually we start these meetings with, you know, what made you interested in the, the scholarship committee?
Oh, sure. So I, I, I know Liz and I was looking at different committees and the scholarship committee, education grants and different things like that is always something I've been interested in. I do a lot of that at work. So I just thought it was a good fit for me.
Certainly from your resume, it sounds like the perfect fit.
Yes.
So Mike, if I can just ask a question, then I'll turn it over to you. Um, so it seems like your committee has two, two different kind of missions. One is to raise money and one is to give out the money, right?
So that is, that's correct.
So, so Erica, maybe you could just comment on how your experience will, will kind of help you in making both of those decisions and you know, helping the committee.
Sure. I will do fundraising first. Not my favorite. Truly be honest, it's not my favorite. Um, but I think that I have learned through my employment that education seems to be common ground for everybody. So it's e, I don't want to say easier, but it, it is easier honestly to ask for money from businesses or even individuals when they know it's going towards a scholarship fund. So I know Liz has done everything under the sun. Um, so she's, she's got all of that, but you know, I could help, you know, distribute things to different businesses. I know that I have used, I mentioned it to Liz, um, the grocery stores sometimes have, you know, bag that you can, they will give a portion of their bags. You know, like the reusable bags that you buy. So they'll give a portion of that to some local nonprofits. Um, so I think there's a lot of different ways that we can fundraise. Um, but I, I'm also happy to just kind of stick with what they're doing because I know that they're doing well in fundraising as much as you can. Um, as far as giving money away, that's my favorite. I loved, I loved give the money away. So I've worked on different scholarship committees, um, granting different amounts of money and coming up with different criteria and then just ranking them and talking them over with the group. And I just think it's a great opportunity for obviously the kids that get the scholarships, but also the town to know that this is here and this is another avenue for families to look at when they're looking at, um, getting money for school.
How do you get that information out to, to the students?
So, um, right, I guess there's a third part too of, um, you know, there's fundraising and there's giving away money, but it's also bringing awareness to the committee in itself. Cause I think it's like the least, it's like the little known secret of Northborough that this fun even exists. So what we've been trying to do in the last couple of years, since we kind of, um, have all like new members on there, um, is to, you know, bring awareness. So we've, you know, we've attended like the summer concerts, um, we've done flyers at the town clerk's office in the library. Um, we've done press releases, just try to like, let the public know that, you know, this, it, this exists. We don't get any town meeting. I mean, town budget, um, you know, for this at all. It's all what we raise. So what we award is, you know, based on, um, you know, what we have in, in our account. So, um, that's, that's a big part is bringing awareness, not only to, for donations, but also to increase it to, so students in Northborough, um, realize it. So it's easy to go through their guidance departments, um, because they usually are the ones that, um, have a system to let senior students know that they have, you know, um, all sorts of different opportunities for scholarships. Um, this year we awarded six, um, they happen to be all be from Algonquin. Uh, but we do contact all, a lot of the other area, um, high schools as well, um, Asabet, St. John's, um, AMSA. You know, anywhere where it's possible that there could be a Northborough student in there. And we do publicize that as well through different groups on Facebook, um, community groups and, um, you know, through the like different avenues that we always use for a little bit of publicity to make sure the students, um, know about it. If, you know, if we, if it's not a school that we normally, they may be attending that we don't know of, they're certainly, you know, able to apply.
Well, that's impressive. Mike, um, you're, would you like to ask a question or?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Julianne. Um, yeah. And, and thank you, Erica, for, for, you know, wanting to, to be on the, um, on the scholarship committee.
Of course.
You know, certainly, uh, you know, looking over your resume, um, certainly in impressive, uh, obviously noticed that you've, um, had a lot of service. Um, I guess you could say serving those who serve. Um, and I was, if you don't mind me asking, just curious, have you ever, uh, served in the, uh, US Armed Forces?
So I have not, but my husband is retired air force.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. All right.
So, yeah. So that's kind of where I ended up. Just, that's where I was when I started working. So.
Gotcha, gotcha. Well, you can, you can thank him for serving, um, on behalf of us. And then also I'm sure, uh, you know, thank you for, for serving those who serve. So that, that, that's great.
Thank you.
That you have that experience. Um, and, uh, and, and no, you know, I, I, you know, I like what you were saying before, um, you know, about the, you know, thinking about different ways to fundraise and, and, and bring, uh, bring money in so that, you know, you can, you can do good with it. Um, you know, so that, that's great. Um, and I don't, I don't really have any other, uh, any other questions. So thank you.
So my understanding is that, so, and you know, on the tax bill, there's the check off for the, the organizations that we want to donate to. And since many, many, many people don't even see their tax bill, right?
Right.
It, that's, that's a tough, a tough one. So you have a lot of other, other work to do.
Yeah.
But it sounds like you've got some great ideas and, um, so now it's your turn to ask us any questions.
Oh, I honestly, I don't have a whole lot of, I don't really have any questions. I know Liz and I have talked about it. Um, and she's filled me in on some of the roles and responsibilities. So I don't really have anything. I've kind of got them all answered.
And, and you, I, I know Erica, um, you're, you're on another committee. Refresh me.
I'm on, um, well.
Children and youth services?
Yes. The youth commission, which I'm sure I'll be, which was going to become something else. I don't know how they're going to do, if they're going to stay the two committees or will be combined, but I'm sure I will know soon.
Right. So if you remember, um, Mike and I will, you know, make our recommendations tonight to go to the select board.
Yeah.
And we're meeting on July 15th. So that's when the approval process really happens.
Okay. That sounds good.
And Liz, do you have any last comment?
I do not. I know Erica has shown interest. She did come to our last meeting just to see, um, you know, what was happening. We actually didn't have a quorum because we, right now we should have six people. We only have four. So, um, we hope to fill, you know, another spot too, after Erica. So, um, yeah. So.
So you have two more openings?
We have, we have two altogether. Yeah. So if, if Erica fills one, we have an additional that we would love to have filled.
So good. You're.
Getting there.
We're getting there. I know. It's a small, small group and you know, fundraising is a lot, you know? And so what we, what we always try to do is look at, um, small work, but big result. So we did do an auction, an online auction last fall, and it was actually, it did really well, um, for, with, um, minimal time commitment, I guess is the word. Um, so tho- those type of things is what we're looking at too. Um, obviously, you know, people who donate on, um, if through their tax bills, that's great. But like you said, we, that's not a big, um, part of our funding. But so yeah, so you know, we're always open to ideas as long as we have the manpower to do it. We don't want to get, you know, everybody works and they're busy too. And it's, it's, and not everybody's thing to, to approach businesses. But when we did the, um, auction in the fall, it, we, we made, um, was it 2,300? I think it was. So it was pretty good for our first time around and we started late. So this year we hope to start, um, you know, end of summer, beginning of the fall and, you know, have a jumpstart on that for November.
Yeah. And sometimes things just need a time to catch on.
Yeah.
Right.
People start looking forward to it. So thank you very much for coming to our meeting.
You're welcome.
Good to meet you, Mike.
Yes.
Yeah. Nice to meet you.
So you will get, um, notification from, I guess Diane or Angie after the July 15th meeting.
Sure. That sounds great. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have, um, Vicky and Fran will be representing the council on aging and Cindy Moore um, for the elderly tax fund, um, committee. And I'll admit all them right now in a moment.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
How are you?
We're, we're well. How about yourself?
I'm doing good. I'm doing good. Am I on time or early for the, uh, to help out with the taxation elderly fund?
You are. So this is the next one that we're doing and we are as close to staying on time as we've ever been. So.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
So Vicky is, um, she's going to be for the, the council on aging and for the elderly tax fund. So I don't know if you guys just want to do that in conjunction, um, Fran, Cindy, here's a question. So.
It says on the agenda elderly and disabled taxation fund. So let's, let's start with that. And, um, you know, just so we all know each other, Mike Teigen is our new select board member. Um, Cynthia, you kind of recently joined this committee or?
Years ago, actually. So, so a couple of years ago, I, that's okay. A couple of years ago, I joined the, um, elderly and taxation committee, whatever it's called. Yeah. And so I've been on it for a while, although we didn't meet last year. I don't think we had a, a quorum of people to be able to meet. But, um, yeah, no, I've been on it for a while now. I've actually re-upped. So I was on it for however long I was initially appointed and then uh, asked to continue. So, yeah.
Great. And Fran, we'll, um, we'll do council on aging after we discuss if, you know, if Vicki has any questions. Is Cynthia or something like that? That's how it usually goes.
I know the drill. Thanks.
Okay. So Vicki, well, I guess, welcome to town.
Yes, we love it here.
Oh.
We've been here about a year and a half and I've been so impressed by the genuine welcoming and friendly nature of so many people, whether it be in the local stores or restaurants or, uh, uh, within this community, it, it's really quite impressive.
So Vicki, um, we, I have to say that your application is extremely impressive. Um, you've had a lot of a very interesting and long background in finance and whatnot. Um, and now you're looking to join this committee for, um, basically assisting people with tax, uh, with taxes.
Yeah.
So I looked, I looked on the, um, on the website today, Cynthia, and it looks like most of your meetings are of, of course, you know, understandably conducted in executive session. So I don't have like the biggest understanding of the, of the committee, but I would imagine that a large part of it is fundraising. So, um, Vicki, I was wondering if you have any thoughts at all about, about how to help with that? So it's a, it's a tough thing these days every.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I actually don't know much about the committee. And so I, I'm actually interested to hear that fundraising is a component of what is done. Uh, I didn't actually know how the, the funding, where the, where the revenue comes from to fund the activities of the committee. Is it mostly from raising from the community or grants? What, where does the revenue come from? I thought it was perhaps a town budget line, but perhaps not.
Could I chime in?
Yes, please.
Sure. So, um, so as for as long as I've been involved, we have not done any fundraising activities. Although I think that the prospect of doing that is quite exciting and much needed. Um, the, uh, the, the, um, funding source is a, there is a, uh, a, a, a block of money that's available. And what the taxation committee has done in the past is we have determined how much we were going to, uh, distribute and how much we were going to hold back in reserves that we would have more to distribute in the future. Um, and you know, part of that is because there hasn't been a plan for how to replenish that, that, those funds. Um, the funds are, the funds do come from donations. Um, and I would say that the need always exceeds the amount that we're able to distribute. Um, and you know, that's a sad thing. And so, uh, but trying to be fiscally conservative or appropriate, I should say, just so there's something there for the, for next year to, to meet people's needs. We never went and spent it all. So.
Hmm. Interesting.
Yeah.
Um, so, so I guess I would probably want to do some brainstorming to think about, you know, where donations have come from in the past. Um, you know, I, I, the friends of, um, of Northborough that, who support the senior center, obviously have, are, have mastered some of the, the nuances of fundraising in this community, because I think they're a great resource for the senior center. And we may be able to learn something from their efforts and how it might help for this effort as well.
Yeah, I, I, I think fundraising would be great.
So, um, I, I, I guess I didn't misspeak asking about the fundraising, but, um, just, you know, for the public on the website, it does say that, that we established in 2001 at town meeting to accept the provisions of the, of mass general law that allows us to have the checkbox on the tax bills. But as we just discussed with scholarship, many people don't see their tax, but tax bills. So.
Yeah.
And, and I guess to allow you to accept donations is, is what was voted on. Um, so Cynthia, maybe you could just, uh, or unless Vicki knows the schedule, because I think you accept applications during certain months and then.
Yeah. Off the top of my head, I honestly, I can't remember off the top of my head because it's been more than a year since we met, right? But there was definitely a schedule. There's a form that gets filled out. There is assistance from the town in case you need help with filling out the form. Um, and I would also say that the, there are often times when forms are received late um, due to extenuating circumstances, things happened, catastrophic things happen in people's lives. Um, and so, um, you know, the committee meets, uh, the way that we start off my meeting is sort of having like, um, the, your typical, like a board meeting where you would have a financial report about where, you know, where are we at? Uh, you know, how, uh, account, how many people filed their, uh, applications and the applications were completed. Cause there's a lot of people start the application and then they don't always get completed over time. Um, so how many people started and finished their applications? What kind of a need is there? And then when we actually get into a conversation about, uh, dollar amounts, uh, in the past, it's tend to involve some pretty sensitive information. So that's where the executive committee comes in, going to executive session. So that we're not publicly, um, talking about people's individually hardship circumstances. And in general, we come up with a formula that we think is equitable with some variables attached to that. Um, and, um, and vote on that. And we have some back and forth about that, some good conversation about that. And, um, and then we come out of executive session and then we vote on the budget allocation that we've, um, agreed to. And, um, and that sort of, um, finishes up the whole process. So.
And as, as part of the committee, do you review one by one the applications or is that sort of done outside, uh, offline?
Yeah. So, so we do not know the names of the people. So for example, we might say person one, person two, person three, right? Family one, family two, family three, right? Is a, you know, three families with, you know, some, some situations going on. But we really tried to create a, um, a privacy wall. And so that we're also not, uh, making decisions about, you know, people we know or like or something like that, right?
So I would want, hope it would be that way.
Yeah. You know, and, um, and then, um, you know, uh, yeah, I don't know how else to describe it too. It's not as complicated as it sounds.
There's just the simple matter of ticking the boxes that, oh, this person meets the qualifications because there's a list of four or so things that people have to meet. So I just wondered, is that, does the committee do that together or is there sort of a group that reviews them?
So the, the town brings us the people who have met the criteria.
Okay.
So they are doing all, they are doing all the vetting. They are doing all the data collection, you know, the form, the whatever things that have to be provided to verify the need. The town does all of that. We don't, we don't get involved in any of that. So again, we protect the privacy of citizens, right? The town does all of that. We don't. We don't get involved in any of that. So again, we protect the privacy of citizens, right? And then when we come together, there's a body of money and there's a list of people who who need help. And then there's a sort of like a supplemental list, like maybe they were a dollar over in the income criteria, or maybe they just moved to town the day after the deadline closed, or, you know, their their house burnt down, something terrible has happened. So it's like sort of like a supplemental list too. And then we go through and we take care of the people who have met all the criteria within the amount that we've decided to allocate. And then we come back and consider if there's anything else we want to change and what our next meeting should be about.
Great. And I had the impression that it's not like a monthly meeting, because it really comes up when the bills taxes are.
I think the most we ever met was twice in a year, maybe three times in a year. There might have been once where we like like we could only meet for a quick hour or something and we all had to go for some reason. I don't know if it was their holiday or something. It's really, it's pretty quick. You know, once the biggest part is deciding, the part that takes the most amount of time is deciding how much of the the bulk we want to distribute versus how much we want to retain. Right? For for future benefit. If we had a fundraising strategy or, you know, a replenishment strategy at least, then, you know, we might have that decision might be a lot easier.
Yep.
And then what's the formula we want to allocate in terms of all the people who have applied?
And and when did the meetings generally take place? What part of the year?
A town generally like reaches out and they're like, hey, is everybody free on Wednesday or something?
But is it usually in September or February? Or do you have any sense?
I'm sorry, I would have to go back and look, to be honest. But I want I want to say that each time that we've met, I I think once it was during the summer.
Okay.
Once it was when it was kind of cold out.
No problem. Just to get some idea.
Yeah. And I, you know, in general, what we do is we meet after the applications have closed and they've been, you know, processed, right? Like all the people have a period of time to get their stuff back to us, right? Back to the town, I should say. And and then the town calls them the meeting, the town administration calls the meeting. And I think the most, the longest that we ever met was about two hours. And we had a real long list and the town hadn't met in a long time. So we we had a lot of people, we had a long list.
That's helpful. I I just to get some sense of of what happens. It certainly does intrigue me to think about. Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, what?
No, I I how we might identify opportunities for funding, you know, because it 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 doesn't sound like there's been necessarily a lot of fundraising done in the past. Is there a small, some kind of allocation from the town that supplements it each year?
Not that I know of.
So you just have a base amount and it's just dwindling every year?
Well, it depends on how much how generous people are in their taxes.
I see. I see. It's that checkbox and the taxes that funds things. Okay, got it. All right.
Yeah. But, you know, I as a disabled person myself, you know, and I have my AARP card, you know, you know, and I'm fortunate not to need the support, but I I, you know, value and appreciate the fact that we have people here who are older and wiser and differently able than myself who need help. And I think that they supporting them to continue to be part of this community is really important to me.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great.
I look forward to having enough people so we can meet.
Thank you. It sounds like a very worthwhile group, and I'm glad there's something like this in town. I I I think I might have mentioned in my application that we were part of the Board on the Ashland Emergency Fund. When we lived in Ashland, we were we were in that town for quite a few years and that we did have donations that would would we would solicit and that was a wonderful resource for people because it could help people in emergency situations. So it's it's nice to have something like that available. So anyways, thanks for answering the questions.
Sure.
So I'll turn it over to Mike and see if he has any comments or questions.
Uh, yeah, no, thank you, Julianne. No, my my only real question, and you may have kind of answered this at the beginning, but, you know, just sort of what drew you to Vicky to 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 this committee, you know, either the and you can answer both if you want, you know, the elderly and disabled taxation fund or council on aging. Just just kind of just kind of curious.
So I'm a retired person. I have time to give back to the community. We were new to Northboro, and so it took us a little time to find out where we might step in and try to be helpful. We got connected through the the Senior Center. Kendra has been a great resource and at the time, there was an an opening on this committee and she happened to mention it to me because I had said I was looking for ways to volunteer and to and ideally something where I could be more engaged with the town. And this seemed like a great opportunity. While it's you know, a nice that it's not something that takes an enormous amount of time, I did feel like I could do more than just a committee that met a couple of times a year. So that's why when the Council on Aging opening came up, I said, well, I'd be happy to do that as well if if that does have an opening. So it was really more that I'm I I'm enthusiastic about engaging with the town, trying to be helpful in ways that I can be. And the this committee was the one that came up first. And when I realized it, it really didn't sound like it was going to take a significant commitment of time, I was happy to try to do something more than just the one committee.
Great, great. Thanks.
I think this is the perfect entree into Fran's explanation of what council on aging will.
And if I if I just say I looked it up while we were we were talking, May and March is when we met. So once when it was cold, once when it was warm.
That's great. You see, I being I'm an extreme, extremely detail oriented and pragmatic person, and I'm thinking we usually take vacations at the end of September or September and October, and I feared that you would tell me that's exactly when you meet, you know. So at least that's put that concern to rest, perhaps.
So shall we move to council on aging and Fran will tell you how busy you'll be on that committee?
Shall I go? Shall I go?
If you'd like. Yes. And it was so nice to see you, Cynthia.
Thank you. Congratulations, Michael.
Thank you.
And Vicky, welcome to town.
Thank you so much.
Say hello if you see me. Okay. All right. Take care, everyone. Bye bye.
Thank you.
I have a little bit of an advantage because I've actually met Fran, even been to one of the meetings that she chaired, so.
That's right. So we did just meet just just last week, I guess it was. Well, and bump into at town meeting. I will just just as a curious note, I'll let you know that I actually was one of the first members on the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee when it was started in 2001. It's a very small committee. It stayed that way and it it never, I mean, I mean, you can go back and look at the minutes and the agendas over the since at least 2010 on the town website. But fundraising was never a focus. It really was the the taxation fund committee, as Julianne said, is based in, you know, Mass General Law. It's about the checkoff box for relief to the the taxes. It has been generously supported in part for decades by a specific family that's supported in addition to the checkoff boxes. But it is a challenge because most people don't pay their taxes by checking, you know, if you have a mortgage. So so it's not actually soliciting funding from the friends of the Council on Aging for the Elderly Disabled Taxation Fund fund probably is even a better way of doing it than trying to, you know, tap into the same group, you know. Anyway, it's interesting, interesting, because the fundraising was never a big deal. And I'd be curious as to whether a three person board, because two people are staff and they're not going to be they're not going to be allowed to participate, everything in fundraising, because it's not a 501(c)(3).
Right.
It's different. So anyway, but I mean, you'll learn more about that. And I'm sure the town treasurer or collector would be happy to sit down and talk to you about the nuts and bolts.
I because I know they weren't available today. And it's certainly something that could be followed up after the fact. I just I lament if there it sounded like one of the things that was said was the need exceeds the resources available. And that that's sad. So it would be great if we could do something about that.
Right, right. And Jocelyn at the Senior Center, as part of her outreach, does help people with the applications. And she also helps screen them for all the different programs that can provide some property tax relief to the older adults as well as people who live with disability. So as you know, on the Council on Aging, we meet the second Tuesday of the month from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Senior Center. Don't worry about vacation. You can you can miss up to three meetings a year without ju, you know, without cause before we would boot you. So.
And you don't.
The email said.
If there was a meeting that came up that we I could zoom in, do you you don't do virtual attendance, right?
So the historically, they have not. I mean, through COVID, no, they met either in person, you know, in the parking lot, I understand, or however they did. I wasn't part of it during COVID. And when I was on the Council on Aging before COVID, there was no subsanism. So
Yep.
You know, I my understanding is that there is certain amount of direction from the select board as to having all meetings be hybrid. I don't know exactly at what point in time that will become a directive that we will have to adjust to. But at the moment, it's an in person from 5:30 to 7:00, while the Senior Center is open on Tuesdays till 7:00. Because as you know, that with only three full time staff people, they are very limited in their ability to host or participate in things outside the normal business hours. So, as I said, the Council on Aging is a nine member board and we're on, I will ask, and I mean, you can follow up with Angie. There is one person that just got reappointed, but then left. And I know, and then we also have a one year to fill in. If it hasn't already been decided, I would love to see Vicky if she's nominated and voted in to be a full three year term. But I think that's an Angie thing or administrative office. But if you could look at that, that would be great.
Yeah, we'll definitely go into that and let you know.
All right, thank you. So I I don't know if you have any questions. I know that you got to see us in action last Tuesday, so.
Yeah, which was very, very helpful. And I'm I I think I've actually gotten a lot of my questions answered. I mean, I I have not so much about council on aging per se. I I mean, I would ask, well, it could be Fran, it could Michael, Julian, Julian. What are you folks hoping to get from the Council on Aging from a town perspective?
That's a good question. So for me, it would what what I think I think the Council on Aging has has been able to accomplish is to to provide support and kind of like just a good life for people who are in town, retired or not even retired, who, you know, who are senior citizens to provide services. I know that they provide things like, you know, helping to fill out applications, Medicare assistance type things. And I, you know, I think our Senior Center does a wonderful job with programs for, you know, for senior citizens and, you know, also establishing a a place where it's it's like a community and you can just kind of drop in and see a friend or pick up a ping pong game or we're not doing pong anymore.
I don't think we have a ping pong table. Oh, maybe.
I I thought.
It's just a pool table. I don't know.
Remember.
I don't think so. I don't know.
Okay, cool. Okay, sorry. But board games, right?
There's a lot of puzzles, a lot of people working on puzzles, I'll tell you.
Anyway, that's a that's a very, that's a very good question, Vicky. So Mike, your turn.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I would say, you know, as as a as a new select board member, you know, what what I would kind of be looking for on top of, you know, the things that you had mentioned, Julianne, right, is to is to make sure that we're getting that perspective and that we're we're watching out for that significant group of of people who are, you know, getting older in town, right, the the baby boomer population, right? Certainly one of the largest in the history of the United States. So there's certainly a lot of those folks. I've got gray hair, but I'm not quite there yet. So, you know, it's it's good to, you know, to have, making sure we're getting that feedback and perspective on even things that may not seem that would affect maybe a particular population that the Council on Aging that would 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 cater to, but, you know, making sure things that are going on in town, things that are being proposed and talked about, you know, making sure that we're getting that 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 there's a group meeting for for that perspective. They're talking about it. They're doing things and they're they're advocating for those folks in town and and bringing that bringing that forward to the to different boards, committees, and particularly the select board and town administration. So that's what I would be liking to the what I would be looking for from council on the Council on Aging.
Great.
Um, so, so Vicky, I do want just to add, you know, the Council on Aging is an advisory board. So we don't have fiduciary responsibility. So we're really meant to support and support the Senior Center Director and the path that she's looking to put the Senior Center on, as well as to provide her with input from those of us who are of that population, you know, what the needs and interests may be. I can tell you that moving forward, as you probably know from the first meeting you had, my objective is to get a more significant buy in from a budgetary standpoint from the town for the Senior Center operations and facilities. Something as simple as, again, to Mike's point with the programming and the services that we want to provide, that we advocate for and advice to Kendra on. There's only $1,500 in the in an $81 million budget allocated for programming for the Senior Center. So I mean, there is, there is going to be advocacy towards an increase in support from the town, not just philosophically, but budgetarily. And it doesn't involve fundraising, because that's what the friends are for. And we we are not allowed to fundraise at all. We're not allowed to do any of that.
Yeah, um, I I think we are so fortunate to have that Senior Center in this town, you know, I mean, I'm like, I know I I I looked a bit at your background and I know you have a certainly a strong financial background and particularly in focused in some of the things around retirement. And Julianne, I know the the statement that, forgive me, that you gave in running up to the election about what were things that were important to the town and and especially in the post pandemic world and about having Wi Fi connectivity. So the Senior Center has been such a great resource for people, one, for building community, for having Wi Fi connectivity for people who need to have a place to go. Helping, I know there's a there are a lot of more issues with seniors feeling a sense of isolation or even depression from loneliness. And again, with the programs that are offered in 2020, about 25% of Northboro was 60 plus. I think that percentage has probably grown. So I would love to see the town recognize the enormous value that had been provided by having that Senior Center. Kendra's doing, I think, an extraordinary job. I'm I'm so impressed by her creativity. The latest thing she did just this past weekend, the fair that she was at with a creative way of engaging children by making Legos figures. It was written up in one of the social media posts, I think, today. So at any rate, I'm very excited about working on the Council of Aging to try to do whatever I can do to help foster support for the Senior Center, because I think it's it is such an amazing resource for the town. I do not, you know, people from other towns come here because places around us don't have a place like our place, you know.
You know what I just learned today, Vicky, that at the Friends, almost 40% of the almost forty percent of the members of the Friends of the Northborough Senior Center do not live in town. They live in, uh, in other communities, but they support our Senior Center through the Friends for the programs and the programs that they enjoy.
That's
That's a testament right there.
Yeah, yeah, I I I've been to quite a few fun programs myself, and yeah, everything from lectures by someone from Mass Audubon Society to the recent dinner with one of the singers from The Platters. Maybe that predates you, it's he was quite extraordinary. Great. So anyways, um, so hopefully I I will have the opportunity to work with Fran in 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 the Council.
And I would say that even though there may be a slight delay because of the summer schedule of the Select Board, regardless of, between now and when they do make their nominations and vote, um, you're welcome to come to the meetings and participate, just like I have you on the email, again, just as a if there was any official voting, you wouldn't be allowed to take part of it, but other than that, your um, actual, you know, your participation is welcome.
Yeah, it was great to realize that because I I enjoyed coming to the meeting was like maybe last week, it wasn't that long ago, and so um, I I feel like regardless, I can still come and first keep abreast of what's going on.
Absolutely.
So um, if there are no more questions or comments, uh, I I would just need to tell you that Mike and I deliberate after this meeting and and then we make a recommendation to the full board. Um, and with our next meeting is July fifteenth, so I, that's probably before your next meeting, it sounds like, right?
It's right after, because we're the second Tuesday. So we'll be on, we'll meet on the ninth. But again, you you're welcome to come and participate.
I'd be, I I appreciate that, thank you.
So do, do you have any questions for us or?
I I think I, we've pretty much touched on the things that I was wondering about, and as I said, it's been helpful to have been to a meeting because it it's sort of given me a a better sense of what the the Council was really about.
Well, it was lovely meeting you.
Good night, you guys.
Thank you for taking the time.
Oh, my goodness, thank you.
Good seeing you, Fran, take care.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
So next on our agenda should be um, deliberation. So Kelly. You know, based on her education, her background, her enthusiasm and support from Greg Young, I I think she's, you know, obviously a great choice for Conservation Commission. Do you have any?
No, I would, I, yeah, I mean, I I would agree, um. I don't think there's any, any real concern or debate there. I mean, really with with any of these, um, you know, great uh, great folks, great ladies that are putting themselves out there for these uh, for these committees, but um yeah, no, Kelly, yeah, ready to move forward.
So um, I'm gonna make a motion that I move that the interview subcommittee vote to recommend Kelly Marston for appointment to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Select Board. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Angie, it, I'm, I'm doing three-year terms for everyone. I know Erica should be three years, and they just asked for Victoria to be three years. I believe Kelly is three years too, but you'll let us know if there's a change before we voted Select Board.
Yep, definitely. I'll look and let you guys know.
Okay.
Great.
So next we had Erica. I mean, her background also dealt with exactly this kind of committee that she's willing to serve on and has already participated, so I would I, I think we should move her forward, but
Yeah, yeah, a- absolutely. I mean, I think her her uh, track record of serving others, um, you know, is, fits very well with the mission of the Scholarship Committee. So, yeah, let's move forward.
So I will make the motion. I move the interview subcommittee vote to recommend Erica Zeiger for appointment to the Scholarship Committee for a three-year term at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Select Board. Is there a second?
Second.
In fa- all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote aye. And then we have Victoria Johnson. Okay, so we should do them separately. The Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. I mean, you know, we can discuss her for both, her, her background is is very impressive, her
Yeah, I mean, I think she's up to fairly recently was a licensed CP, a certified CPA. Um, you know, she's, you know, with her accounting background and can, you know, the director of finance and accounting, you know, she's uh, I think, yeah, has the experience to not only look at numbers, but to make some some hard decisions on how to allocate them. Well, I think she'll, she'll fit in, um, fit in well, and I, you know, I didn't realize how how um, infrequently they meet, so I'm glad that she is on, you know, that second piece there with Council of Aging, and they do kind of fit together, you know, um, in in the same uh, same ballpark, so. But yeah, yeah, no, I I certainly would move her forward for the Taxation Fund Committee.
Okay, and and we kind of combined it with Council on Aging, so I'll, but I'll do the motion separately, okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I move the interview subcommittee vote to recommend Victoria Johnson for appointment to the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee for a three-year term at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Select Board. Second? And all in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And then I move the interview committee vote to recommend Victoria Johnson for appointment to the Council on Aging for a three-year term at the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Select Board. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Is, um, and then there is the business of the minutes, which um we discussed with staff and Mike, you would be able to um, to approve the minutes, but you have to watch the the meetings. So if you're willing to do that at our next meeting, and we can even maybe meet quickly before July fifteenth and approve those meetings, you know, like ten minutes before.
Yeah, we could figure something out. Yeah, I didn't know if, if, I know there's only two of us, if I abstained and your yes vote would be enough to push it, or that, no, it would have to be both of us.
It it would have, yeah, because not quite a majority, even of two.
Right, yeah, you can't really have a majority, yeah, it's fifty fifty, so. Although I think you carry more weight than I do, but.
Thank you.
Not, not in the official circumstance, so. Uh, yeah, I can, I can certainly review those previous meetings, and then we will get those approved at a future date.
Great. So Angie, do you have any other business for us, or shall we conclude this meeting?
Nope, that's it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll, I'll um, second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great
Thank you very much.